You don't have.
I made a statement on.
Okay, we have a forum and I'm gonna call us to orders with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Well, I'm surprised you said that one's drawn.
Just for.
That was added to the.
If you state mention of the date.
Yes, this is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Monday, August 27th, in the meeting room of the Westbach Town Office. Do we have motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
I second it.
All those in favor? Selectmen's comments and announcements. Do I have anything?
I don't think I have any. Oh, yes, question.
Yes.
The, what's the cutoff date for the applications?
Application cutoffs for the town administrator position is September 4th.
Okay.
Close of business.
Okay.
And the cutoff for nominations for school board and selectmen are the 7th.
September 7th cutoff for nominations. And the next board meeting will be September 10th, 2018, at 5:30 here in the town office. Change of protocol, because we've had some very long citizens' comments positions that have left us a little pressed for time, I'm going to limit citizens' comments for five minutes per issue unless the board wishes to make an exception as the comments come up. So, do we have citizens' comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I was up here today to check on the registration of the vehicles. And I was talking with Julie and Cam here. And I'm reading on the thing about the town administrative position. And I'm here to support Julie. Julie has been in this town for, how many years has she been our town clerk, town treasurer? She's trained two or three town administrators. Julie is more than, to my personal opinion, is more than well qualified. She's been a select person for Fitz, Pittsburgh, so she knows your side of the table. She knows the other side of the table by working with them and training them. Julie is very credible. I don't know anybody in this town who don't like her. She's very accommodating. I mean, this lady here could be busy and she steps right in and takes hold of, she can do it all. Julie can do it all. And we've found out that if you bring a stranger into this town, I think personally, Julie's no stranger. They don't last long. They're in here for a training session. Okay, John, how long has he got? A couple years? This guy you just introduced here, a couple years? You know, I think, I really think that she would make the best person for this job. I don't care who you go on your resumes. This girl has worked hard for this town. She loves this town. She works hard for it. And I would love to see her get, that's just my opinion. And I'm quite sure that if we brought it out there, there'd be a lot more opinions of the same way. So, yeah, I know you guys haven't made a discussion, decision, or anything, but please, keep it in mind. I know you thought we were doing, but that's the way I feel. And I know a lot of people feel the same way. I've never heard a bad word about Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the comments.
That's all my part.
Okay. Any committee department reports? Okay, business item one. I thought we should probably have a brief discussion of the presentation that Mark Robinson made at the last meeting about the Raise the Floor plan. Just a question, do we want to pursue this? Is it, do you think it's a good time or should we wait or, or what?
I think. I think we should wait until we can see just what sort of initiatives is we want to turn into. They don't have, they don't even have a bill written. They're just fishing around for money to hire a lobbyist at this point. So it's, still it's impotent stage. And personally, I think this is the core impetus for this is the town fay. Wants this initiative to go through, but they also want several other towns to help ramming it through the legislature.
I agree with Peter. Until we see what they're proposing, it's hard to favor it or back or whatever. You don't know what they're gonna say.
And the, the Freddie Flaherty in the literature, they took credit for. I don't know, defined instituted for not consolidating your school by such and such a date. I don't recall there being that big a fight about it. I thought it kind of died a slow death all by itself. So although Freddie Flaherty's taking credit for making that happen, I really question that. I think it's a stretch.
You have a thought or two?
I disagree. I think it's something that we should jump on board. I think it's an opportunity to small amount of money for a big investment for the town to get back. I think we waste a lot more money on unsure things. And even though this isn't a sure thing, if you does get this through, I would like to be on board with it. I do think you can save the town some.
I agree with that, but I'd like to see what the wording is, what they're proposing, not even a final draft, but just a draft of what they're gonna say.
Then maybe we should call him and ask before we just say where.
Yeah.
They don't have a draft yet.
I'm not against the idea of it, but I would like to see when I'm signing on, as far as the wording goes, before we sign on.
Did he say any time?
When he thought he'd be close to a draft or?
No, no, they haven't even started the draft, making the draft. Cause they need to hire the.
Right, but he has to go around present this to all the towns. I mean, that takes a significant amount of time.
Yeah, they haven't written the draft yet.
So I wonder if we should give them contact with him to see what the draft is.
I see the problem with that. Asking what the, what the draft is, what is it now? Sure.
Yeah, cause I just don't wanna close the door.
Oh, no, I agree. Until you see what you're agreeing to and putting money forward, I agree with the principle he's doing. Just wants to see that nothing else. But I like to know what I'm agreeing to.
I don't know what you're talking about, but just a drift of what I hear, somebody trying to put the capital off.
I don't know, you gotta get the people on board. I mean, no one town can do this on their own financially. I mean, you've gotta have.
What I'm saying is, is you don't have any explanation of what they're gonna do.
Oh, we have explanation of what he wanted to do with the draft.
Right, they're, they're talking about.
That means what? If it's written, word of mouth, it's good.
No, no, he has a draft and stuff. He's, he's three quarters of the way there.
What they wanna do is they wanna fund, they wanna fund.
Minimum receivers.
They wanna make a minimum amount for minimal receivers.
Yeah, and but.
For schools.
But they want to go outside of the education budget to fund it, which means they're gonna raise taxes again, still.
So should I email him back and ask for a potential draft and?
And if he says he doesn't have anything, then we're kind of, we need to sit on the hold, yeah, because we can't.
We don't know what we're supporting until you know what we're supporting.
Right.
I think addressing the entire school funding issue is important, but I, I would like to see the, a draft of the draft anyway.
Well, we can, we can put this, either table it or kill it right now. And I mean, we can raise a thousand bucks to give these people anytime.
Right.
You know, we don't have to have it.
Well, I don't think we have to have.
Walking around here.
I don't think we have to have a vote, but I can send the, I can send an email the next time I'm in the office. Just say we'd like more information, what's the draft? And, and we can just take it from there if this is.
We'll get tabled.
Just don't act on it.
Or just don't act on it. All right, so. The next item is the letter from the Corps of Engineers, and I see that I didn't quite put that in there. So what, what this is, is I have a phone call, and then the follow-up was a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers with a copy of the letter from 2004, in which the town, along with Westbach, Westbach Brunswick and that little corner of Bath, was asking for Army Corps help for considering water quality options and increasing tidal flow in New Meadows Lake.
I'm gonna put the call in.
They fast forward how many years later, and they now have funding.
Fifteen.
They now have funding.
Because of funding, just to study it, yeah.
To conduct a study. They have, they have funding to conduct a study. But before they went ahead and did this, they wanted to know, were we still interested in pursuing this? What this would mean ultimately is they would do the study on any environmental improvements that could be done on the lake. They would then come up with recommendations about what might be done. They would come up with their recommendation about the best solution to whatever problems currently exist in the lake. And then the towns, presumably Bath and Brunswick and we, would then be responsible for raising a percentage of the funding for that. It seemed to me that. The, the environmental study is at no cost to the town. And it seemed to me that we might as well put our federal taxes to work to see what might be done. Like the. I know that when I was meeting with the New Meadows watershed people a year ago, there was a lot of concern about returning estuaries to their wild and free tidal states. I don't think there's a whole lot of support in West Bath concerning that right now. But there has been in the last year or so, the discovery of Vibrio? Vibrio, which is a bacteria that is infects clams and can cause illnesses. And so there may be something that could be done that would grade, that would lower the water temperature in the lake. Vibrio is a water temperature driven bacteria, so.
Is it the new bacteria?
It's not, it's a very old bacteria, but it's new to our water.
Okay. Did it come from somewhere else?
Something.
It's in the water.
It's in wa, it's in water. But it flourishes in warm water.
You still do the clam, oysters over there?
My neck is.
You still go over all that? What impact would that have on? You know, if they do, if they're talking about just a group wandering down here on the, by the.
It has, it has impacted.
Both sides.
It has impacted the way that shellfish harvesters treat the kelp hogs, particularly in New Meadows Lake, as they come out of the water. They have to be iced to a certain temperature. And, and the oyster, oyster beds are treated, are treated the same way. So it has, it has impacted people who, who harvest in the New Meadows Lake particularly.
Five years ago, they didn't do it.
No, because they didn't have it.
Right, then somebody went out there and found it, it was out there.
No, somebody got sick, that's why they found it.
Well, if the, if they're gonna pick up a tab for the study, we might as well do it. And we learn something, who knows?
Yeah.
And then we can, we can take a look at what their recommendations are, whatever pretty tell they may be, and we can choose accordingly.
Yeah, apparently we're not, we're not obligated to choose anything.
Well, they're obligated to say anything.
Yeah, and I would ascertain that before I bring this back to us all.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Have you heard from Brunswick or Bath if they're interested in the study? Do all towns have to be in agreement on it?
I believe so. And I have not heard. I thought the first place would be to talk with us, to see what we thought before we, before I went. I haven't made telephone calls. But if we think this is a good idea.
I think as long as we make it clear that we're not under any obligation to.
When a government agency comes bearing gifts for free, I, a big red flag goes up.
Well, the state and government created that problem, so.
Gotta keep those people busy.
All right, they created that problem.
Yeah, they, they gotta make their hundred, ten thousand a year.
The. If, if it benefits, hmm, fifteen years later.
It's been 11.
Nice to know how high the concentrate of this, of that.
Yeah, yeah. We, we can, we can get information on that through DMR. Okay.
Should you have a motion then, just to make an official?
Should, should we? Yes, sir.
Yeah, might as well.
Because it is asking something of the federal department.
Which may, or may not cost us money down the road someday. So let's, let's put the, write the foot forward and over.
I'll run it.
I'll make a motion that we. That we explore with the town of Brunswick, city of Brunswick, city of Bath, Sagittarius County, Coppola County if necessary, to see if they are on board with going along with this, this study.
One second, I'll.
Okay, and further discussion. Okay, all in favor? Good evening, Mr. Reno.
Good evening.
Can we take him?
Yeah.
Out of order?
Sure.
Well, we'll put him in order.
Yes, thank you, John.
Steve Reno is here to talk about the summer roads projects and give us an update on what's new and exciting and tiring.
Well, the roads were the big beating last year from the snowplows of the softness. I guess we had a lot of warm spells and then snowstorms. So we tore up a lot of, a lot of hot top, a lot of shoulders. We're trying to get them back into place now. We did the Fox Point Road, but we're gonna have Crocker do an overlay on part of it to seal everything back together. But we got it trimmed up. And I'm working on the mountain road. There's quite a few roads in the town that really took a beating, that peeled up a lot of hot top. Which, I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure it's, it's part of being rookie drivers and the bob trucks, I mean, letting their wing drop right down and cutting the shoulder and catches over into the hot top. But I don't see any, any way that we could stop it. I mean, unless I fix it. Cause right now, the civil crossroad, we didn't even have a 12-foot wide road out. We do now, we got it back to 20, but that's how much they ripped out, caught, the wing caught down beneath the hot top and just peeled it. So we get that, I got meeting with Mosley, he's coming down and gonna give me some prices on doing an overlay over these spots that we fixed up. We did have some money in the budget for that. And I'm not quite sure what's going on with the bull rock road. Still haven't, they haven't finalized anything on that with Rock Crew or, last I know, it was in Adams, he's, he's working on it.
Bull rock.
Town minded, what caused the problem? I don't.
Proceed. So I know where it is, I just wanted to know what project.
We knew where it was off, we had that rock crew re-engineer it.
Landing?
Nope, nope, it just passed webs. The spot that got fixed about 10 years ago. And it's all come back sinking.
Frost, frost.
State roads that.
Oh, you mean headed out towards State Road?
Right.
Then he's fixing again?
Yeah, and I, I've been doing a lot of patching and walking the roads. There's a lot of spots that need some, we need some bigger attention on some hot top. We're doing what we can to keep them from going any further.
Okay, I, I'll check the file and see where that is.
Well, I know it came in kind of high, so we was gonna figure if there's another way we could do it. When last me and Adam talked, he said there's no way that we could get it in the budget for that.
For this year.
Right.
Yeah.
So, well, it's actually, it was for last year. It was in last year's budget, but we lost it somewhere else, so.
Okay.
I can't tell you exactly where it went. But we had money set aside in there for that, and then we didn't have any.
What was it that walked under that, Stevie? Did he drum a what's that?
Wolf didn't do it, Hill did it, and it, they put it out for bid. And I'm not quite sure what he did. Jimmy, give him a thing to do, it didn't work, so that's why I thought it would be better after having Rock Crew look it over, give us another opinion to see if we could make something work. But whatever we did before, we obviously missed it.
Is that part of the whole flooding issue that?
No, no.
It's just. Okay.
And we have gotten just about every culvert crossing shinned up to the town. So people should be happy.
Did you get the, the one down on Austin Road?
Yes, both were.
We had a nice email that said, thank you very much, so. And I'll, I'll email him back. He was wondering if it was the Dumbos Pot Hall Fixers or, or the town. So I'll, I'll let him know that it was us.
It was a kind of, we did both, there was actually three culverts there that only did shimmed up.
Yeah.
I was in the area, I had hot top on, so I just did it. I was gonna call you, come to a thousand dollars, do all three.
Yeah, well, I, I went down just out of curiosity. It was, it was a mess.
Yeah.
So I'm glad you did that, thank you.
And that's like another road that needs a bunch of shim and, and hot top. I mean, it's just, I don't think we've touched that road in 15 years.
Which one?
The Austin.
Austin.
Oh, Austin.
And I know there's only three houses on the whole road.
Maybe they haven't touched it for a while.
Yeah, well, there's.
Yeah.
Was there anything about that, what about the end of Tommy's end of that bull rock road, people don't know anything there?
Well, that was the same, the same deal when we had Nick a bunch of legends start out, but obviously they didn't get it low enough.
Oh, there's a rock coming up through an alley.
Yeah, so. Have to do a piece of rock.
And when you do what you did, probably what you did on the, on the bronco. That is a spring in the middle of that road and it keeps coming up. That's bad. It gets worse every year. It is.
Steve, how, how's the mountain road? Can you make basic improvements to that road without, until the town decides to get surveyed and?
Mm-hmm, I did a lot on it today, we spoke. We put over 30, 30 ton net on it today. We shinned up all the spots that we dropped it off, we shinned most of the culverts. It could use more, which I was gonna talk to selectmen and stuff, you know, we went with what me and Adam went over, what we had, then try to use up the rest of last year's.
Yeah.
But I wanna try to get these places shinned up, and at least the places that I get shinned up, like that crook that come along, and you get a really price to put a nice overlay over all of it, to lock it together. Cause all we're doing is putting a band-aid on something, but it needs, if you don't, these bob trucks should get another winner like we had last year, where it gets warm, your ground gets soft. These shims I'm putting in, they get peeled off like butter.
How about the Bridge Point with the, the crack in the road down Bridge Point?
Yep, we've been sealing them.
All right.
We get a lot of them, the names up, the, they're not as bad as they look for.
We had a lot worse ones in that town.
The ones that scare me the most in the whole town are the ones, I mean, if I was on a, we probably are closer than liabilities on a few of these roads with motorcycles. There's cracks in the road so wide, they could send a motorcycle off, and that's what I've been caught straightening up a lot.
Thank you.
They get their front tire in one of those, I mean, it's engine.
Defensive drive?
Yeah, well, they, they'll be on the.
They a little bit more.
Do you think we should concentrate more on, maybe some less tree work next year and more hot top as far as tree trimming?
Yep, well, definitely more hot top. The tree trimming, we should be both caught up this year.
Okay, so then next year, next project we'll work on more hot top and, and road repair.
Well, I'd like to be able to sit down and have a little more say about it.
Well, you can meet with us anytime you want.
Yeah.
You weren't here.
Right, no, and he did good, but he got to work with it, just that, the biggest thing that bothered me, we got screwed out, that allowance we had in there, cause that was for hot top. Nobody see that was using it, but if we ever had an emergency in need, like this year after that bad winter, we could take a hundred thousand dollars right now and just dump it in hot top, let me roads.
That would go far.
No, it doesn't go far, but the problem is in our budget. That's why we, as road commissioner, when I was there, I was always asking Jimmy, what's his carry going, what the carry over some road? And he said, well, cause you can't, we only get a hundred thousand dollars here and there to do a paving job, and no, it doesn't go by three, four miles.
Well, it's made to a point that find out when you're gonna be around with an early way in the budget season and make sure you can meet with you when you're here.
You guys are gonna be here this year, all right? I had a hell of a tip, two things.
Good.
Crocker used to add down to 28 dollars, 28 dollars a ton.
Yeah.
All people, thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you. What's the worst, worst road right now, in your opinion?
Well, Rockweed was really got messed up by the snowplows. You have a section there in Northwood, it's gonna like slow down, they turned in there. I don't know if you guys understand what I'm saying about these, on these new, the old trucks have a cable wing, so you let it down just away to the wing, would sit there and float and push it back. But these new trucks, it's got a cylinder that forces your wing. So if they get into a soft spot, it's just like a grader blade, it'll just cut it, all the stuff real. So very turn to go up that hill, you've got a big chunk out there, then it come back out, so we put it in, we put in over 10 ton of hot top, just fixing those spots. But the worst road. I don't know, they're all pretty much the same, but I can tell you, that's road.
The one through road we have.
I'd tell you, if we could put another five grand in each road, we could be good and help over for another, a good solid year. Of just shimmin' and, and taking care of the cracks and.
Do you have, do you have any money left to do that as far?
I'm not sure, it's, it's something I gotta sit down with whoever.
Yeah.
Whoever knows my budget.
Julie, probably Julie at this point?
Yeah.
You have the time to do it, if you have the money to do it?
Yeah, what I wanna do is give you, give you guys a list of what roads need what and stuff, and then I'll, I'll present it to you and you can tell me what, you know, where to get the money from, or tell Julie I paid it, or however.
Yeah, if you're making that list and you're trying to make it like a, an order of what.
Priorities?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. What needs to be done, the worst, the first?
What can you guys give a rough idea what I do have to spend? I mean, so I'll sit there and go overboard or something, I might, wouldn't be overboard, overboard, but it's like, okay.
Probably not right this minute.
I can't this minute, but.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Check with Julie tomorrow?
Sure.
And.
No, this, this year, last year, last year's is, I think we're pretty much need that up.
Not sure about that.
Now, if you got people that are, are gonna be complaining about some ditching, and I had in scheduled to do a bunch of ditching that was in the budget, but I don't dare to do it right now. I mean, right now, our roads are so soft and caving in, I don't dare to take any more material out unless it's something that we need to make the water go. You understand what I'm saying? You've got a road bed, and then you got your ditch. So if we put a two-foot ditch in over there, you're taking away what's holding that road bed in right now. And a lot of these roads are going like this. So until we can do it right, we probably just oughta do the middle of, of ditching.
Make sure that people's driveways aren't getting flooded insofar as possible and.
That and.
Call it good.
Walk it out.
Yeah. Keep the ponds.
But finally, you know, a lot of people say, why ain't you guys ditching? Why ain't you ditching? Well, it seems like every road that we ditch, and Bridge Point's a prime example, the sides are all giving up, they're all cracked and shattered. the sides are all giving up. They're all cracked and shattered. And your side, you know that big crack you see? It's because that whole side of that road, side gave way, and it opened that crack up.
Oh, and those ditches were so pretty.
Yes, they were pretty. They were massaged nice and everything, but there's no road bed to hold the road up. That ditch was helping hold the road up.
Yeah. It's, it's really unfortunate that back in eighteen hundred, when they started making roads, they didn't make them right.
It is.
Because we just don't have, we just don't have the basis.
And they don't, and, and Lake Pittsburgh is taking them, I don't know, I, I bet, they've been fifteen years now, still trying to get that Archeshead Road right.
Yeah.
And they're doing it right, because they're doing it in sections, and they're redoing it, and so they're, they're waiting. They're putting little band-aids on it, and then when they get, but I can't see that happening with us for a while. That we can do too many big projects like the Hill Road.
You think the culverts are pretty much all centered in town as far as, I, any bad culverts or?
Um, I didn't find any. Like I said, I've walked a lot of roads this last couple of weeks, and most of the roads that I see is, I don't know what happened or who dropped the ball, but these culverts never get shinned up. They're supposed to be shinned up a year after they're put in. And nobody come back, so the town been paying for it this week, getting them shipped back up.
Like, as far as you're concerned, most of the culverts in town are also?
Yeah.
As far as the, strong point, kind of, good?
Yeah, we're looking good on that. There's another thing I'd like to also do is, Adam bought a program for road maintenance, and I'd like to work with that a little bit, see if I can figure out destinations, certain roads, certain, my, certain culverts are, eventually get it, and get something going on that, so it works.
We have the program?
Yep.
I'm sure he won't do it.
He, uh, he bought it there.
So I think we start several years back, I'm trying to, in our computer system program, where the culverts were changed, or what roads, what repairs have been done to the roads.
Yep.
At least I thought we did.
That sounds like we didn't get there.
We should, he, the thing he does is it set up GPS coordinates. So you find a culvert that you put in, you punch it in that coordinates, what road, and you just, when you, you can take your phone and punch that coordinates, and go ahead and find that culvert. And check on it.
Yeah, it's supposed to enable us in a better history of what road, road repairs we've done.
The town needs something like that, because right now, if I, if I get that road commissioner tomorrow, next time I come in here, he ain't gonna have a clue what the culverts are, just like I don't. I mean, you gotta pretty much find them.
And then a few were missed.
Oh, yeah, and then, you know, if it wasn't for guys like you in the town, and they could say it even during real, you know, it's hard to find.
Culvert, culvert, who's got the culvert?
Well, good, but, uh, let's make it a point to work on the road, which is another plan for the fall.
Steve, do you have the program, or is it in the office? Do you, do you know?
Adam has it.
Okay, pretty sure. I, I haven't got a touch with him, but I know where it is and how to access it.
Yeah, because he was actually pretty excited to want to get it going and stuff.
And then he deserted us.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else that we should know right now?
Yes, we, uh, we need to get bid in August in.
Yes, indeed. It's on the list of things to do for September.
Well, when the September comes, but. And so, um, do you have a contract? How you wanna bid that? Have you have a bid paper?
Well, somewhere in the file, yes. It'd probably be lovely if you could come in and visit with me and go over that stuff sometime.
Because there's a lot of things that are left out here and there, and I just wanna make sure. Whoever, I think to save the town some money is give them the price of mixing it and pounding it up to a holt it.
Yeah.
Et cetera, double it out.
Right.
So, last year, we just wanted to do it that way, for the simple reason is we wanted to see what the building would hold, and how to do it without hurting the building.
Yeah.
Now we're pretty much done.
Okay. Um, I plan to be around in the office, like two to four on Friday afternoon, or I could maybe use some other time, and we could ransack the office and see where those papers are. Did you say Friday? Friday? Does that work?
To a block?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't like doing much after five on Friday, so.
I don't mean. We have Friday night supper, so have to be there.
And I guess the other question is Sabino, what's, what's going on with that grant? Are we doing anything with that, or are we?
We're waiting, waiting.
The engineers doing the permit process.
Yeah.
That's gonna take a year.
So, yeah, it's kind of, yeah.
So we're just waiting for the calendar to slip by.
And the way they talked about it, we'll probably have to ask for an extension, because the engineering won't be, as far as the premise goes, won't be done in time before the grant runs out. So I'll ask for an extension to get the permit process done, so we can do it, what, July and August is the month we can do it, I guess.
Yeah, asking for the extension isn't a big deal, it's just, we have to make sure we ask.
Exactly, and, and, right, and, yeah, because you can't do it while those bats are spawning. Anything. They have badhouses now, you know, with the bats, and when it's wet like that, you're not allowed to work for three or four months.
There are bat, badhouses down there now?
Yeah, they, they respawed in the trees. They're not allowed to touch it, disturb it.
Well.
It's not because of fish?
Well, if we keep it up, we'll have something every month.
It's what it's coming to.
Dragonfly hatch.
But, yeah. I think engineers said that Martin could do it with July and August.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm remembering that, too.
But you didn't think you had the permit process, that's why this coming here. But we should make sure, how it's going along, so in case you get, you get money appropriated to town meeting, we can do it. And, or find out by next spring if we gotta ask for an extension on the grant. We don't want to let that run out.
Yes. Um, I have some, I got a big packet from, um, the Department, Department of Homeland Security about emergency grants that I haven't had a chance to read, but some of it has to do with flood abatement, so that might be something that would be worth pursuing. So I thought I'd take a serious read at that, something in the next week or so, to see if it actually applies to anything that would help us with either Sabino or Bridge Point, because that's a storm, that's a storm surge kind of danger, too.
Oh, the Austin Road?
Austin, Austin Road, if the tides keep going higher, the bottom of the hill on the Austin Road is gonna be underwater. It's like.
Well, that's not gonna happen for a couple of years.
We hope that we don't get one of those slow-moving tropical storms. Okay, Steve, um, so we'll see you on Tuesday, and we'll.
Yeah.
Ransack the office and see what's there.
Yeah, we did, uh, Friday.
I mean, Friday.
We got the road all straight and rolling.
Yes.
So all that stuff is still there.
So you might wanna stay for the next agenda, just so you're aware. Yeah. Yes, um, so we also had a letter from the main Department of Transportation. They're talking about the Berry's Mill Road culvert, although our immediate response is about utility poles. They wanna know what we're planning to do, if anything, with Berry's Mill Road in the next couple of years. They're, they have not funded it yet, but we do have a work identification number. Yes, so apparently we're gonna get new culverts.
Okay, what was the, oh, you lost me somewhere.
Okay. Do you wanna, can I? Yeah. Do you want to use? Yeah.
What do they want the towns, to state a road, so what do they want the towns?
They just want us, they, they're asking first off, this is about utility poles, but they're talking, they want us to know that they're gonna do it, and there's a work order.
Well, I spoke to some of BOT last spring when I saw a legal act on the paper vote, this project, and he said it'd probably be twenty, twenty-one before they receive the funding for it.
Probably, yeah, that's probably right.
Five years, they said, sometime.
This is, they just wanna, they wanna try to avoid two, two parties.
Working. Working at the same time.
They want, they want to make sure we have a repair of their road?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think they realize it's a state road.
Ah, I'm, well.
We, we wouldn't have anything to do on that road.
All right, so I'll just send them off a note and say, thanks for the information.
Well, we'd love to see you do some tree trimming and all that. On Berry's.
On Berry's. Okay, well, I, I can, I can make it, thank you, that was helpful. Yes, thanks. It's always good to have the guy who knows the roads when we're talking about roads.
Well, it's, I think, after we've been sitting, we were talking a while back about the light down here in the corner.
Yeah.
I'm kinda thinking that's a good idea, running them all the time.
The one at the.
Four corners, four corners.
The intersection. This summer has been awful, hasn't it?
Half a million dollar light?
It's so hard to get out.
That half a million dollar light?
Yeah.
You saw the price tag on it.
No, they, they destroyed the road.
Different locations, because even the fire department, because right now, you're kind of trying to get out of the fire department. If they have a light there, stop it, or give it a hole to pull up now.
Yeah.
I mean, the fire trucks, and see with that, I, I really think we should have a red light over there flashing to let these fire trucks get out, because that road is getting busy, really, really. So if somebody wants to put a bug in the state's ear, or senator's ear, or what's her name's ear, that, you know, we have a fire department there, cars crashing up over the hills, I mean, that, it'd be nice to have a button that when they fall off, that light flashes or something.
Good thought.
Before somebody gets hurt.
Yeah.
Or you wrote it.
Especially.
Had made a hell of a truck.
Actually, well, yeah, that's the biggest, and I've also seen some motorcycles come flying up over that hill, and it's like, whoa.
All right, so Austin saying, we don't, we don't plan anything because it's your road.
I did get some new fire department signs that we gotta put out, and I was thinking of putting together for the state road, but I told my neighbors, so. So all them signs that we have out there, just kind of.
Okay, and I'll ask them, why at first?
Ask them.
Check with Jay.
So do we have any idea how much sand we want to order for this year?
Yes, but I, I don't have the note with me. We can talk about that on Friday.
Okay.
Um. Okay, we're ready to move on. We're on set? Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
You see, on Friday?
Yes, twelve o'clock.
All right, I don't know. Next up, just a quick note on the tax-acquired property, the late-breaking, um, item from one of his last notes from Adam. The Kings Point Road, we've had a couple of, um, we've had a couple of inquiries about this from a butters particularly. Um, there are some complications with, with all that. But we can go ahead with, with that at any time.
The, what are the complications of the Kings Point?
Um, one of the butters came in with a recent survey map, and there's, uh, there's an encroachment from, from an abutter. Um, including a well. According to the survey. So I'm.
Well, that, that, that wouldn't stop us from selling it with a quit claim deed.
No, it would not.
Then, uh.
It, it might stop us from getting an elegant price, but.
Yeah, yeah.
But it would, it would not stop us from, from having the land back on the tax rolls.
Right. Okay.
Is it just one encroachment?
I think there, I think there are two very close together. Um, one, one from this survey map was right on the line, and the other one was, well, it over.
If it's on the line, maybe what it is, it'll be a setback. Probably about, maybe what, what the encroachment is, is a dwelling, or?
It's part of a septic system, I believe, and, and a well.
There's certainly gonna be a setback for both items.
Yeah.
Is it a buildable lot with setbacks?
According to Ellis, just barely.
This is gonna be interesting.
I think interesting is the word.
If you can't work something out with the, the enclosure by the abutters on the property. Because if, there's gotta be setbacks for a while, there's gotta be setbacks for a septic from the, from the body line, there's gotta be.
Yeah. I'll check again with Ellis. This, apparently this lot has been town-owned since the forties.
We put the, uh.
There's a telephone pole easement on it that we granted a year and a half ago here. The, and Gersni Moore roadmap, um, there was a question about whether or not there was a person who was listed on the deed, whether or not that person was deceased. Uh, Sally did, did find a, a death noted for a person by that name in Maine on April sixth of ninety-six. Um, she suggested that, um, if we wish to do something further, we would ask for an actual death notice from the Bureau of Records, or what do they call themselves?
Vital records.
Vital, vital records, to ascertain whether or not that was all a person. And there was a, there was a problem with the, with the rock reed. Rock-weaved road, um, that apparently there was a certified ledger missing, so we can't move forward with that.
We can't do it? We can't move forward with that?
Um, she recommended not, um, you know, for forty-five days, it says here, and this was August ninth, so we must be getting close. Yeah. So I was gonna be in touch with her again. Okay. To see what the status of that should be, and what she recommended us, about us going forward.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the property on a number of notes, including the rather unsafe condition that it seems to be in.
Well, we haven't taken possession of the property, so we're not.
Oh, good.
Not responsible for it legally. Whether we're actually having moral responsibility, that's a whole other thing. I'd like to get that thing sold as soon as possible for just that reason. It's an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, it really is.
If we, if we.
Nine more days.
If we, uh, if we go down there and even tack up no trash battery sign or something, we have taken possession of it, which also means that now we're in the title deed chain, which means anything that ever comes up.
Is ours.
And we have the deepest pockets. That's why we don't wanna take possession of the property.
Especially for another nine days, right?
Yeah. I'll, I'll reach out to Sally again about, about, see what we can shake loose on that. Okay. I'm here, up there. We had notes from Sweetser, New Hope for Women, and the Pet Free Library, um, thanking us. thanking us for our financial contributions to their organizations, came in, to the Board of Selectmen this past few weeks.
So warm the heart.
It, well, it, it's, I think, nice to have acknowledgement. Are there other others?
No, um, just a quick, does it look like, does it look like we're gonna get to sell any one of these properties this year, or are we running out of time?
Uh, I, I think we're close, I mean, I, I, I think if we, if the intention was to try to sell it during the peak real estate season, we're, we're kinda gone.
Yeah.
Well, if you can legally get around to selling Rockweed, you have the right exception and reject, I mean, if you wanna fill that, we would, um... Yeah, it might be still worth exploring that one, you know?
Well, if they, I'll say it takes them, takes the auction company two weeks, let's say, just to get situated. Once you start running ads in the paper, it probably is thirty days.
You might wanna ask Keane what they think about it.
Yeah, it's probably...
Okay.
I was hoping that we could be moving on this last spring, but...
Yeah.
Well, we do have an interested buyer in Kings Point, right?
Yes, so, couple.
Yep, so, that may not be a bad thing to get out there.
I know, I'd be best to do them all at once if we could.
No, we don't have to.
No.
We don't have to do them all at once.
Okay.
Because I think, I don't think those buyers of Kings Point are gonna go away, I think they're, they're interested in, I don't think it matters if it's September or October, right?
Yeah.
Good point.
I think that Kings, that Kings Point property is probably most valuable to an abutter.
But it has waterfront access, limited access, whatever on Kings Point, uh, Rockweed.
Rockweed's gonna work.
Once you ask, advertise that, there's gonna be interest in it.
Yeah, there's gonna be water, it is waterfront on Rock, Rockweed.
Yeah, and that's gonna interest, so I don't think you're gonna hurt us up too much, whether it's October, you stop being, and I'm, I'm gonna be a big... If they'll advertise it, and then if they'll...
Probably is also.
Yeah.
Well, let's find out from Sally if, what this, I, I still, I can't wrap my arms around this forty-five days. Why it matters now, why it didn't matter six months ago, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I'll see when I can turn up and report back.
Yeah, okay.
And, um, it occurred to me, other, other, um, Julie reports that we're fairly close to commitment, we should be able to do that on the tent.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, we had talked about, um, talking about the job description and the possible contract that we wanted to offer as we look at
Yeah.
resumes. Do we wanna do that tonight? I've got the stuff for us, if you want.
Okay, um, well, we could, um, I'm thinking, I would, I've got the job description, but I don't, didn't pull up a copy of the contract itself.
Yeah.
I think our attention needs to be on the contract. The job description is, um, soft enough and vague enough that, um, you know, it's fairly comprehensive in, uh, what the duties are, although specifically specified, because the more you specifically specify, the more chance you are to exclude certain things, so you keep it broad, at thirty thousand feet. So I think the job description is fine, um, but the, uh, contract is what we have to, um, go down through and decide what we wanna...
What our social offerings are going to be.
So do we wanna do this tonight, or do we wanna?
We could do it tonight, in, in executive session, or you, we, you can take these, and we could do it on the, on the tent?
Yeah.
If it, what's the, what's the cutoff?
Close the fourth, or the second.
Yeah, so, do you wanna do a...
We wanna do it probably tonight, then, I think. Because we'll, uh, we'll open the, we're looking at resumes soon, we'll be open tomorrow.
Application's closed at four.
On the fourth, yeah. Um, the other thing we probably should decide is, do we want to have a special meeting to look at all three of, uh, at all of them all together, or separately?
The resumes?
Yeah.
I think we'll look at them all together. Because, um, there are three of us, and one or two of us might not see, we just need to discuss each one.
Yeah.
Or not, and decide as a group whether we wanna get into it or not.
Right.
If we get into it individually, we'll still have to do that again.
Right.
So let's just do it together.
Okay.
Do we know how many applications we have, because?
Um, I don't off the top of my head.
No, last time, you, it was like fourteen, so I was just wondering.
And, um...
I think since last time, we've had three come in.
Impressive.
Yeah, and, and, and they look good.
Really?
Yeah.
All good. HR expert for the ham. Can't wait to look, see them.
So we probably should have an executive sess- session tonight to look at this thing, and then
Yeah.
have another meeting to look at the resumes sometime next week?
Yeah, I, yeah, we do have to do this tonight, because we gotta get it down to Sally, too.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. So, looking at next week, we close on the fourth? Uh, we got five, six, and seven.
We have no meetings here?
Hmm?
There's no meetings going on, so you had your choice of dates?
I'm free any of those notes.
To look at resumes, you're talking about?
To look at resumes, yeah.
I vote the sixth.
Vote the sixth?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Particular time?
You want that movie?
What, whatever time people could be available.
Okay, it's up to you.
Okay.
Yeah, anytime. Anytime.
You have a time? Quick, let us play.
I know.
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock?
So that's the sixth Thursday?
Six.
Okay.
Do we wanna end this meeting and go into executive session?
I think we should.
Sounds like a motion.
Is that a motion?
Peter, are you seconding it?
Peter, are you seconding the motion?
Oh, yeah, I'm seconding it.
Go into executive, um, session, we're still into this note.
Chapter thirteen, four oh five, six A.
That's the one.
The purpose of discussing personnel.
Of the purposes of discussing personnel. Um, all is in favor. Six thirty-six. We are entering into executive session.